All right, Mr. Chair, you are welcome to start anytime you're ready.
Okay, very good. We will call to order the Wednesday, November 18, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Can we get roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Win?
Present.
Commissioner Silva?
Present.
Commissioner Evans?
Present.
Commissioner La Micah?
Present.
Commissioner Dodson? Vice Chair Spalletta?
Present.
Chair Owens?
Present.
For the record, we have a quorum.
Okay, review. Very good. Review of agenda items. If there's any items that have rose after the 72-hour posting deadline, this is the point in the meeting where a vote may be taken to add the item to the agenda. A two- to three-majority vote is required. Have we got anything?
Not to my knowledge, sir.
Very good. We'll move over to public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board on matters within the jurisdiction of the city of Seaside, but not on the agenda, may do so during the public comment period for up to two minutes. Public comments of specific agenda items are heard under that item. For the public record, please state your name. Do we have any public comments?
We do have two people participating on the webinar tonight. If you'd like to make a general public comment for items not on the agenda, please use the raise your hand function. Uh huh. We do have one. Okay. I apologize if I mispronounce your name. Prashant Mora, you can unmute yourself and speak for up to two minutes.
Hello?
All right, we can hear you. You have an echo, but we can hear you.
Um, my name is Dervashi Mora, and my husband here is Prashant Mora.
Oh, ma'am, ma'am, this is public comment. Your public comment will be heard under the agenda item for Mr. Morris' fence exception.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll hear from me in a minute. Okay, and someone with the phone number ending in 0942, you can unmute yourself and make public comments of a general nature that are items that are not included on the agenda. I think the unmute feature is star, star six. It's not working. Okay. All right, maybe we'll... Sorry, we can't hear you. Please try again later. Sorry, I feel bad. Okay. Well, they disconnected. Okay, got it. Through the chair, there's no more public comments.
Okay, we will close public comment and come back to approval of minutes for the October 28, 2020 meeting. Anybody find any, anything wrong with those minutes? If not, can I get a motion to approve them?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of...
I'm sorry. Let me see here. October 28, 2020.
Uh, on October 28, 2020.
Very good. So I have a first from Commissioner La Micah. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Dave Evans. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Do we need to roll call these again?
We need to do the roll call, sir.
Okay, it's...
Commissioner Win?
Aye.
Commissioner Silva?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner La Micah?
Aye.
Vice Chair Spalletta?
Aye.
Chair Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Very good. Business items. Fence exception application number FE 2003. Dervashi Mora, property owner and applicant, is requesting a fence exception to allow for an eight-foot-high fence within the 15-foot yard setback located at 4205 Pennsylvania Point Drive, APN 031-241-029, in the RS8 Single Family Residential zoning district. The project is category exempt, class three. Staff?
Thank you so much. Leslie, could you allow screen sharing for me? It seems to be disabled.
Dana, can, can we interrupt you for just a second? I think a couple of us need to recuse ourselves.
Sorry, guys.
No, that's okay. It's time to move on.
So, yeah, so I was just gonna say, because I, I live in the neighborhood and serve on the HOA Board of Directors, I'm gonna recuse myself from this agenda item.
Wow, you, my screen went crazy here.
Yeah, something.
Sorry, that's me.
Okay, so I, I'm gonna leave until maybe somebody lets me know when I can join again.
Very good.
Text or an email would work for me as well. I, I feel like I could be impartial and fair on this, however, to avoid any appearance of inconsistency or whatever, I think I'll recuse myself. I just have one request, and that is, I had a number of questions for staff that go back, really, this is just a good example of stuff that I've noticed since I've been on the Planning Commission. So I would like to talk about a few things. They don't really impact any way I would have voted on this at all, but it's just stuff I need to do. So I'm hoping that once the vote is taken and this is resolved, that you'll let me then talk with Dana or Beth or whoever's on before we go on to the next item, if that's okay.
Very good.
And to the two commissioners who are accusing themselves, I'll send you an email as soon as it's, we're finished with the item.
Thank you so much, Leslie.
See you soon.
Bye-bye.
Okay, go ahead.
Dana, it's Dana tonight.
Thank you. Totally confused.
I'm still here. I'm still here. I need to stop. I'm still here.
Okay.
Is there something I need to do on my end, Leslie?
Just close out, and then you'll reopen it again.
Got it. Sorry.
No worries.
High-tech.
Okay.
All right, feel free to proceed. He's gone now.
All right, so this is a fence exception application for 4205 Peninsula Point Drive. The property owner is requesting a two-foot height increase. This was a fence that was built in 2015, and the resulting fence is eight feet tall and is located within the rear yard setback. This is a photo showing the fence before the addition was added, and then as it exists now with the addition. This is a corner lot, so they have a front yard and a street-side yard, so this rear yard abuts their neighbor's front yard. From the inside of the property line, we do have a two-foot retaining wall, so the size of the fence measured from this retaining wall, the base here, is only six feet on this side, and so is compliant. And I should also note that just based on our discussions from the past Planning Commission meeting during our fence updates, this would be a fence that is compliant with what we're proposing to have our fence heights be for this section of people's yards. We did have a number of people send in comments. Well, we had two comments. The yellow are applicants which have sent in letters of support for this fence application, and then the yellow are letters which were sent in when they applied for the HOA approval of said fence. There are a number of fences within this district that are technically not compliant. We do have large changes in grade as you drive along Peninsula Point Drive. These photos were taken going from west to east. This is a planned unit development which provides for flexibility and unique features. And this is pretty consistent with what's found throughout the neighborhood. More photos just showing these high retaining walls with fences atop. Basically, staff does recommend approval of this fence exception based on the required findings listed in SNC Section 1730-020F. I'm happy to go into further details or answer questions. I know the applicant is looking to make a brief statement. That is basically it. Short, sweet, and simple.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioners, anything for staff? Same here. Okay, well, we'll open it up to the applicant at this time.
Mrs. Mora, you can unmute yourself and speak on the item.
Can you hear me?
We got you.
Hi, my name is Dervashi Mora, and I have my husband here, Prashant Mora, with that, with me. Um, yes, we're just applying for the fence exception. We had originally put up the extension in October of 2015, and it was to help block the wind that was coming into our backyard. Um, and then we, at that time, we redid the fence because the original fence was rotting and falling over. So at that time, we redid it and extended it to be taller to help block the wind. Um, that way, we can use our backyard. We have two daughters that like to play and ride their bikes in the backyard, and so this allowed us to use that space.
That area just creates a wind tunnel that goes right through and down to the neighboring house down the hill there. If you look on the pictures, you saw on the right side, there's that whole tree line right there that kind of blocks most of, most of the wind, but that one area in the corner there, you can see it comes right through. Can you hear me?
Very lightly.
Very lightly. Okay, here, hold on. Is that better?
That's much better. Where'd you go?
Can you hear me?
There you go.
Yep.
Stay right there.
The wind, the wind tunnel that's created there, and that's why the fence is coming down.
Hey, Leslie, you want to let them know they're fading in and out? We can't hear them.
Can't hear them.
Did you hear them, Danny?
No, I cannot hear them. I hear...
I can't either.
Mr. Mora, we can't understand what you're saying. Can you get closer to the device that you're using?
Oh, yes. Is that better?
Oh, that's much better. Thank you.
So we originally, in October of 2015, we fixed the fence, and then while we were repairing the fence, we added the extension to help block the wind that was coming into the backyard. So it's mostly in that corner area. It just brings in like a wind tunnel that comes to the backyard. So it was hard to use that backspace. We have two daughters that like to ride their bikes and play in the backyard, and that, you know, it was hard to do that. And so with the extension, it helps us in, you know, use the backyard, and, and it's been there almost five years now. So we tried to make it look exactly the way the existing fence was. That way, it's, you know, just seem, yeah, seamless and keeps the neighborhood nice, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from applicant? We will open it up to public comment at this time, Leslie.
For the chair, there are no, no other attendees on the webinar, and we did not, I did not receive any public comments on the item from the public.
Neither did planning staff.
Okay. We will close public comment and bring it back to commissioners at this time. Commissioners? I personally see nothing wrong with it myself, especially when you look at it from their backyard perspective. It looks like they would have only had a four-foot fence, it looks like, in the backyard with the retaining wall there, so I have no problem with it.
I have no problem with it.
Commissioner Hun?
I'm the same. I, I echo you guys. I have no problem with it.
Commissioner Micah?
No, I see no issues.
Very good. So we will bring it back to commissioners. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the fence exception application number 20-3.
Very good. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now we need to do a roll call vote.
Okay, Commissioner Win?
Aye.
Commissioner La Micah?
Aye.
Vice Chair Spalletta?
Aye.
Chair Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. I will bring, I will send an email to the other two commissioners so that they can rejoin the meeting.
Very good. Thank you. I got a stye in my eye, and it's just killing me. Want to get off this thing.
I did send the email, but if any of you have their phone numbers, feel free to text them and let them know they can come back in. I don't have their phone numbers with me right now. Ah ha, Mr. Evans is back. Outstanding. I'm through the chair. I don't know if you're interested in letting Mr. Evans ask his follow-up questions now the item has been approved while we wait for Mr. Silva.
Chair, you are muted.
Sorry, I was muted. My wife wishes she could do that for me. Go ahead, Mr. Evans.
So are my questions to be directed to Dana?
Yes, I am. I am the one who is here. Though it was Beth who prepared the items, but I can, I can answer to broader questions.
Yeah, because really, it's just, you know, I still feel like I'm on such a steep learning curve with the Planning Commission. You know, we, we don't have that much chance to really ask questions and learn in the context of meetings, so I probably should make the... With COVID, it hasn't been easy to make the time to come and ask questions, but, but kind of here's where I'm at. And let me, let me pull up the, because this is just such a good example for me of some issues that I've noticed over the years that I wanted to check on. So for example, on the staff report, so it happens to be at the top of page seven, or eight, excuse me. It's part of what's called the, the project description. So there's a sentence that says, "According to the applicant, the height increase is due to a hardship caused by excessive wind that limits the use of the backyard space", which, you know, because I live here and I know that lot, that, you know, I assume this is approved, right? And, and so I'm not speaking out of turn here, you know, but, you know, that's just, that's, that's about as bogus of a statement as you ever gonna see. But I understand that if they're, they're coming to the, to the city for stuff, they have to show hardship, et cetera, et cetera. I've learned that much. But the, the nice thing, at least for me, as I read this sentence, was I saw it said, "According to the applicant", so I didn't feel like Beth or Dana were stating that as a fact. But I, I have felt at times that I wanted a little bit more of a balanced statement, or, or at least caveat from staff saying, you know, "We haven't gone out and tested this for wind, or, you know, there's, there's no real difference between this lot and the rest of Seaside", or just something. So I just wanted to bring that up, not, not because it was important on this case. You know, Dana, you, you probably looked at the pictures that closely. There must be 12 or 15 trees around that fence, and there's, there's no wind getting through anyway, and I believe, I could be wrong. In this case, I think it was done by a prior owner. I think he was a contractor. He did it probably because of that little platform slash planter in the backyard, and that's why he extended the fence was not for wind. But, you know, if, if the current owner has ever had a problem with wind, that means that that fence didn't work. So anyway, you know, that's the kind of thing that, because I was a little bit more familiar, that, well, you know, this is similar to some other stuff I've read, and it just bothers me when, when it's not questioned or it's not balanced out. The second thing was, I was surprised about the SEQA paragraph. Since this is a residential project, do, do we have to have that SEQA paragraph in there?
Yes, SEQA for, for all projects, whether or not it's, usually for a city, it's exemption, so it does qualify for an exemption. But yes, every single project needs a SEQA review.
So it qualifies for exemption, but you still gotta have the paragraph in it?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. And then in the staff analysis, and this, you know, this is gonna kind of go to fact stuff that, that I was a little surprised by just a few statements in here. Let me find them. Again, because they kind of go to the heart of some of this stuff, but there was one thing in here where it said, "Surrounding fence and wall photographs are provided and illustrate a variety of fence and retaining wall heights", and I get the retaining wall height part of that, but the, the, the fences in Seaside Highlands, and this is just, this is kind of stuff for the commission to put in the back of their heads when dealing with anything in Seaside Highlands. The fences in Seaside Highlands are all five-foot, one-by-sixes overlapped. So the fence itself, they are unbelievably uniform to the point where most are even painted the same stain color. So, you know, maybe parsing that sentence a little better in the future for stuff like this. The same thing with the, the majority of fences and retaining walls are not compliant with the regulations of Seaside Municipal Code. I'd be shocked if that's true. I would say the vast majority of fences are all well under six feet, including the, anytime you've got a retaining wall or even footings down at the bottom. But again, there is some variety, but they're all under six feet, so just FYI on that. What was another one? And then the, the proposed two-foot increase is compatible with the variable fence or retaining wall heights. Again, because there really isn't a variety, again, it's all five-foot, one-by-sixes, with sometimes a little bit higher footer, but that, that extension is definitely a one-of-a-kind in this, in this place. Again, I wouldn't have caused me not to vote thumbs up, but I just felt like some of these sentences needed to be parsed a little bit so that they're more balanced, more fair, if you will. In, in a sense, taking kind of a critical path to the, to the ultimate findings, you know. The only reason that's important is oftentimes you get stuff like in evidence or item five, where the evidence is kind, kind of a combination of everything that I just nitpicked. And, you know, I don't want to do that in the middle of a meeting, but I think it's important that if we're going to have a staff report, a staff analysis, that it really balance out those pros and those cons of some of this stuff. Because no one project's gonna be as one-sided as we end up with almost all of these conclusions, in my opinion. Now, that may just be me. The other commissioners may really want something that said, "This is what we believe. Boom, this is it." But I, I, when I see all this positive stuff and nothing that's balanced out with what, in this case, I know are not quite accurate statements, it makes me wonder, you know, how, how much can I bank on all of that as a commissioner as I'm just reading these reports and then having to make a decision? So I, I would just like a little bit more pros and cons, balanced view, so that I know I'm making the best decision I can. So that was the only reason I wanted to ask about some of these questions.
No, wonderful. Thank you for sharing, and we'll definitely utilize that moving forward.
And that's all I've got to say about that.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, we're going to move, oh, I got it backwards now. My... Dana, what you were talking about is the, the, what wasn't usually okay in Seaside, was that on page 18 of the packet? Where the, the six-foot fence is right on top of the retaining wall?
Sorry, could you say that again?
In your packet on page 18, what he talked about was that fences that were not normal in Seaside, something that we wouldn't accept, and looking at 18 with the six-foot fences on top of the retaining wall, is that what you were talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Very good. Okay, skimming back here to the tattoo. Okay, Seaside Municipal Code Amendment, SMA 20-06. The city applicant is proposing a tax amendment to the Seaside Municipal Code. Staff?
That is correct. So we have a definition of specialized terms and phrases. One of those is personal services restricted. These are personal services that tend to have maybe deteriorating effect on the surrounding neighborhood. And so as, as a way to minimize those adverse impacts, they require, they're only allowed in certain districts. So these are things like check cashing stores, fortune tellers, palm readers, pawn shops, psychics, spas, hot tubs for hourly rental, and then tattoo and body piercing services. This application is looking to remove tattoo and body piercing services from the restricted and put it into the personal services section, which is defined as establishments providing non-medical services to individuals such as barber and beauty shops, clothing rental, home electronics, laundromats, and tailors and tanning salons. So we are proposing simply to remove tattoo and body piercing services from the personal restricted section and then moving it to the new section, which would allow it, under the personal services category, which would allow it to be established by right in our CMX, CC, and CRG districts. And we did amend it to say tattoo and body piercing slash body art services, not just tattoos and body piercing. This is very similar to some code amendments which were initiated for the West Broadroy Urban Village area. This specific plan did allow for tattoo and body piercing to be established in the urban village, and it was passed and adopted unanimously by the city council, unanimously, not anonymously. It is recommended that the Planning Commission open this public hearing, hear any public comments, and after discussion, hopefully approve and recommend that the city council adopts the proposed tax amendments. I'm happy to answer any questions. Another short, sweet, simple one.
I have a question for you. Why?
Well, we do have a couple of people who have been wanting to open up businesses. We don't actually currently have any body tattoo piercing places in Seaside. Um, we only allow it in one district, the heavy commercial, CH, which is a very small area, which has very little shops and spaces available. So this would allow it to just go into normal retail areas, like you would find a beauty or tanning salon. And just with the ways, this original code was written in a time where I think body piercings were connotated with something more negative. The culture has been changing greatly. It's becoming much more commonplace. I myself have tattoos and body piercings. It, it's something we feel would be better served for the public, and I think would be supported by the public as well.
Is this due because there's actually no places for them to rent in the areas that we have for it?
As far as I know, the CH district, yes, doesn't have anything currently up except for a Hertz rental car agency. There, the CH district is, it's, it's our heavy commercial. It's located in, in areas where you're not getting lots of foot traffic. That's why it's the heavy commercial. It's more for kind of industrial-type uses. You know, it, it's a little bit more, not blighted is a bad word, but it's, it's intended for uses which have kind of a negative impact on the surrounding areas. And this is, I don't think a body and tattoo piercing place would qualify, and needs to be cordoned off in these sections. I think walking down Fremont or as with the urban village and Broadway, seeing a tattoo and body piercing place would be something that people could, could support.
Yeah.
But again, that's why we're here to discuss.
Well, I was just wondering why we didn't incorporate the, the psychics and the rest of them that are on that list, because to me, those are also personal services for certain people. So I can't understand why we're just picking out tattoo and piercings out of that and not the whole group of them.
From my understanding, this is the one that has been receiving the most... From my understanding, this is the one that has been receiving the most in, inquiries. Um, we could expand it to include additional restricted services and you know, cut down that definition even further.
Right. I was just, I was just curious until we get to the actual commissioners, I, I just, that was a question for you that, you know, is it, uh, cause if we don't have rental areas in the other places for the others, they're probably looking for a place to rent also.
True.
Very good. Okay. So we will open this up to public comment as, uh, staff has asked. If there's anybody wishing to speak on this, they may do so for up to two minutes. Please state your name.
Chair, we have no one participating on the webinar and we have not received any public comments in writing.
Very good. Okay, we will close public comment and bring it back to commissioners. Basically Dana, you heard my, my thought on it. I think we should open it to all of them. If there's that lack of, uh, of places to rent and they could possibly fill some empty spaces within the city. I'm all for opening it to all of them through, through the same thing as you're doing for the tattooing.
Yeah, of course. Right now I think there might be restrictions based on COVID, but once that hopefully passes.
Well, yeah, I was hoping this, see, when I first read it, I was worried that's what you were going, because a personal service, something that could be open, even when they say to shut everything down and but seeing that that's not, I'm, I'm totally for it myself. Commissioners?
I had a question. I, I'm, maybe I misunderstood the urban village slide.
Of course.
Do we, we currently have all of these items available in the urban village or do we don't? I, maybe I misunderstood.
No, yeah. So the, sorry. So the, the tattoo and body piercing is allowed in the specific plan of the West Broadway Urban Village. So I said, Jake, the CHM currently, the West Broadway Urban Village Zone allows body, body and tattoo piercing parlors.
So we'd have, we have two locations that they could go in right now today.
Correct.
Okay, okay. But and does that, could, could you put that slide up again? I just want to reread that to make sure I understand.
Give me one moment. All right. It should be up on your.
It only allowed for tattoo and body piercing businesses.
Correct. Yes. Not all restricted personal services, just tattoo and body piercing.
So what, what the chair is suggesting is that we move, don't we have a fortune teller on Fremont? Or is that in a house? Thought we had a fortune teller on.
We have psychics on Hamilton and Fremont.
Yeah. So were those exceptions or are they part of whatever the two areas that you're talking about? Obviously not the urban village, but.
I'm actually not sure.
Okay.
Might have been a grandfathered in because it's been there forever.
True.
I may through the chair.
Yes.
This is, this is Community Development Director Gloria Sterns. So just to remind everybody that one of the reasons that we're going forward with the request that we made is because of the demand that we're having. We get a lot of inquiries for new businesses and, um, the body piercing and tattooing is one of the more popular ones that we've received. And we've had to send them on to other cities and it breaks our hearts to have to do that. But we do not have demand for a lot of the other ones. So maybe we need to concern that, concern ourselves with opening it up as we see demand for others going forward. But for right now, it really is just focused on the, the tattoo and the body piercing.
And Gloria, is there a reason why they haven't looked at the urban village, even though that's open to them?
I, I can't answer that one. I mean, they're free to look at different spaces throughout the city. And, and we pointed them to all places first. I mean, I usually regardless of zoning, point to people to all places within Seaside to try to just get them interested in the city. Knowing that if we wanted to, we could always look at zoning afterwards.
Yeah, you had said that you had to, uh, send them to other cities, but they could have gone to the urban village locations.
There's not always the right sizes and spaces available at the time. So it really depends on what they want to open up. I have had to send more businesses like this outside of Seaside in my four years of being here.
And do we have any, any history on medical issues? I remember I grew up in Long Beach where we had lots of tattoo parlors. And we always had lots of medical issues in the paper about the tattoo parlors. I, I know nothing about current situation. So I'm just curious.
Right. These days, um, there's a lot more of an emphasis on health and safety procedures for people. There's a lot of certifications and licensing they have to take. Uh, it's really an emphasis on a safe procedure. I think it's become very more, um, commonplace than before. I think it was a little edgier, you know, back in my day at least. So that wasn't something that you necessarily did. But these days it's a lot safer and healthier. There's inspections on regular basis. People have, um, they have accountability. So I think that's something to take in consideration.
Thank you.
Any, anything else commissioners? No?
Well, I have something.
Well. Go ahead, Danny.
Uh, I'm very pro business. So I'm very supportive of small pop stores around Seaside. It needs, you know, new would you, would you nation, you know, new livelihood around here. So given the opportunity for the smallest businesses that we, you know, that wants to uh, bring business, bring, you know, jobs, you know, create something different, you know? So I, I, I vote for this. Uh, uh, you know, I'm for this new amendment.
Very good. Can I get you to make a motion, Danny?
So I motion to approve the municipal, uh, code amendment SMA dash twenty dash zero six.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second.
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. La Micah, is that you?
Yes.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor. We're gonna have to take a, uh, trial by jury here in a minute anyway. So I think we're all eye on this right now, right? Okay, Leslie, you want to go ahead and do roll call?
Commissioner Winn?
Aye.
Commissioner Silva?
Aye.
Commissioner Evan? You're muted, but I thought I come in your mouth.
You're muted, Dave.
Give me the thumbs up or the thumbs down. Okay, aye. All right. Mr. La Micah?
Aye.
And Mr. Silva, or?
Aye.
And Chair Owens?
And it's an aye, aye.
Unanimously. Thank you so much.
Very good. Okay, reports from commissioners. Anything commissioners?
I have a question.
Or go ahead, go ahead, Danny.
Okay, thank you. Uh, you know that, uh, area between, um, across some Ichiriki and that used to be a bike shop, there, we mall in that place. What is, what, what's going on over there? Where, where they're building over there? Is there, does anybody know?
Yeah, Gloria actually is aware of that project. Gloria?
That's going to be, um, a fitness center and then that also will be an office area in the back. So I believe that is something that went through our board of architecture review and you might notice that the architecture is starting to look spectacular on that project.
Yes. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I would have thought it was a restaurant with that outdoor seating.
I thought it was a beer garden.
Their, their plan is honestly just beautiful. And I think once they're done, it, it's gonna be worth taking a good look at.
Yeah, it's amazing how the city is changing. Uh, I was born here in nineteen fifty-five and to walk through Seaside like we do daily, the wife and I, it's just amazing. The change you're seeing is so, it's very endearing because Seaside for so long was held down and to watch it just sprout just like the vegetation. I mean, it's really quite amazing.
And on Fremont, the mattress store is, uh,
Bicycle.
Occupant. No, it's not bicycle, motorcycle gear.
Oh, is it motorcycle gear? Okay. I thought it was bicycle.
But now I don't have to go all the way Gilroy.
Hey, there you go.
There you go.
I asked a couple.
We lost you, Dave. There you are.
I'm I keep hitting every button.
You're, you're live now.
Get another button. Sorry about that. I don't know what happened. Um, yeah, I asked a couple of minutes ago about the, uh, Verizon Tower or self, you know, the faux pine that we approved. Oh gosh, year, year and a half ago. And I never heard back on what was going on with that.
Was that the one at the baseball park?
Yes, sofa.
Gloria?
Yeah, that one I don't know the status of currently, but I could get back to you for our next meeting.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, hopefully the construction in our city starts catching up with their demo modes so that our sidewalks get put in so that people do want to walk within our city. Exactly. I noticed all the way down, uh, Broadway, they're opened up. And you don't see a cement finisher anywhere in sight. So it would sure be good to see somebody get on them so that they move their, their schedule along at a, at a good clip. But other than that, that's it for me. Reports from, anything else commissioners before I go to staff?
I just had a question of staff of, of, you know, with the rollout of, of some tightening COVID restrictions, how is that going to impact the city?
I'll take that one. Um, we're going to continue to do what we're doing, trying to encourage people to do healthy distancing, encouraging wearing masks. We, um, do have a mask order right now for anyone. Across the peninsula, every single jurisdiction has a mandatory mask order. There were new regulations that rolled out from the state yesterday. And we are anticipating by next week, the state's actually going to roll out some additional regulations. So we're kind of sitting here waiting to see what those are going to be. In the meantime, we just want to encourage everyone to follow what those guidelines are. Please, any kind of gatherings you have, they're supposed to be limited to people within through, like no more than three households. So anything you do, even with the Thanksgiving gatherings, um, they're really discouraging it because they're saying COVID is really spreading through the small gathering situations. We have actually, um, our numbers are going down while everywhere else around, across the country is going up. So we're really pleased that we're having compliance within our communities, but still this is not the time to let your guard down at all. Um, a lot of other states right now are, are instituting curfews, but not shutting down businesses because of the economic impacts. So we're trying to just kind of see what um, the state of California is going to do and what our local health department is going to do. One thing I was going to report on for our, uh, for staff communications was we had a ribbon cutting today for a new rehabilitated park that we opened. Um, we had purchased the lot at the corner of Sonoma and Contra Costa. It previously been owned by MPUSD and completely had fallen into disarray. And it was just a fenced up old basketball court. Hadn't been used in years. The city bought it. We rehabilitated it into a mixed use court. So it can be either basketball or footsole. And that's kind of exciting, but at the same time, it was heartbreaking because we opened it, but then we locked it. Cause you can't actually, in, according to the Monterey County Health Order, you can't engage in that sport right now. So we're going to put together a nice video about how it was a community driven project. A member of our neighborhood improvement commission saw the opportunity. We went forward with it. It's a beautiful park. It really is. Um, but
I took a walk by there.
Okay, good. Yeah. So.
How come it's crooked though? I just had that one question. You know, I'm a, I'm a contractor, so things that are out of plum to me drive me nuts and that whole thing is cockeyed.
Well, I didn't notice that when I was there today, but it was only for a couple of minutes. So I'll, I'll ask that question.
Yeah, make sure that our contractors do us a good job.
Noted. Does that answer your question? Unfortunately, we're just kind of in a holding pattern. We think that there's going to be some more stringent regulations that come down when guidance from the state. We're following all of the rules and we are really encouraging our public to to do the best they can to protect themselves and their loved ones. One of the reports that came out today actually about mask safety was the masks aren't necessarily protecting you, they're protecting others. So if you really want to protect your community, wear a mask. If you love Seaside, please protect your, your neighbors by wearing a mask everywhere you go.
When you run, do you have to wear a mask?
You know, I, I struggle with this. I do wear a mask, but I don't wear it the entire time. Anytime I come within 20 feet of anyone, if I see anyone in front of me, anyone near me, I will put it up. But if no one is around me, then I do pull it down because I think it's psychological that it's hard to breathe, even though there's studies saying it doesn't limit your oxygen. It's still hard.
It depends on how far you go. It gets so wet. It's like, don't want to wear it now, you know, it's but I was just curious because that's what we're doing is we're pulling them down and then putting them up when we need. But I was just wondering what the city was on that.
According to the health order, if you're exercising and you're not within 15 feet of anyone else and you're exercising, then you are not required to wear it. But I want to be a good leader in the community and show people that I'm wearing it anytime I'm coming in near contact with anyone.
Very good.
I would like to jump in too, though, and remind everybody that City Hall remains open to serve people. So from eight AM to five PM, Monday through Thursdays. Um, we tend to be closed on Fridays for service to people, but we're still open to come in and get permits to do things in the city because we do want to keep things moving forward. Um, planning staff remains able to serve people and, and serve your questions. We just tend to do a lot of these things via email these days. So everybody be safe as much as you can and enjoy the upcoming holidays safely. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from staff?
Um, I do want to mention one more thing. Uh, December third is our, we have a council meeting this Thursday, but December third is a council meeting that we will be swearing in our new council members. So the election results are not final just yet, but it does look like we will be retaining Mayor Oglesby as the mayor and Councilmember Pacheco was vastly selected for reelection. And we do believe that Councilmember, uh, Alexis Garcia Arizona will be our newest incoming member and we will be swearing them in at December third. Um, it will be live streamed. It will be at City Hall live so we can do the oath of office. We're discouraging anyone from coming down personally. It will be live streamed so anyone can watch. But you can drive through and pick up a cookie if you want.
Oh, you got curbside service?
Curbside service for cookies. Yes.
Very good. Anything commissioners for staff? Very good. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I move you adjourn.
Do I have a second? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have to do a roll call?
I don't know. And I'm accepted. Thank you. It's unanimous. Thank you, everyone.
Very good.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Bye. Good night.
Are we?